Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board of Education meeting. Would we please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. I will now ask for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Dr. Gilbert.
Good evening. We have for our communications, first I'd like to congratulate you Chairman Wade on receiving the Certified and Master Ambassador Award at TSBA's Leadership Conference and Convention for the presentations you have made on behalf of the school system throughout the year, so congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe we have a guest, I believe that Cory Wells is here from Read to Succeed about the one book, right? Okay, welcome.
Yes, thank you for having me here this evening. I'll give you the brief spill for everyone about Read to Succeed and then talk to you for just a minute about this year's one book. As you know, Read to Succeed is in its eighth year of numerous programs to support literacy in our county, including the Reading in the Schools Day, Reading Rally, Unplug and Read, The Read to Be, and our high school, Express Yourself Arts Conference. But tonight, I am here to bring your attention to this year's One Book Community Read Program. This is our fifth year, and every year we partner with Lineball, MTSU, and Barnes and Noble, and we ask adults in Rutherford County to read the same book. This year's title is The Hunger Games by Suzanne Collins. Now you may, if you're familiar with this book or have heard of it at all, you may be thinking, hmm, that's a young adult book, and it is. But we have learned from our own committee reviewing this book and from lots and lots of buzz in the community that lots of adults have been enjoying it and finding it a page turner as well. This book is set in a bleak future in which an oppressive government and reality TV have combined for a deadly spin that leads the principal characters, which is two young people, to fight for their very lives and their humanity. Despite being futuristic, this book addresses very relevant issues in terms of hunger and poverty, injustice, family and personal relationships, culture, trust, government, and more. With some of those themes in mind, we have partnered with Greenhouse Ministries, who many of you know, serves the underprivileged in middle Tennessee with the food pantry, housing, job training, and much more, and also the United Way, which of course works for the common good of people here in Rutherford and Cannon Counties. The Hunger Games has been on the New York Times Bestseller List for over two years, and it's being made into a movie which very conveniently is premiering in March, which is around the end of our reading season for one book. Stephen King, the writer, said of this book, "I couldn't stop reading," and that is what our committee found as well. We are hoping and indeed finding already, indeed Mitchell Nielsen has already been in the news for having sixth graders' parents and teachers reading this book, and so we think it's exceptional because it is that intergenerational dialogue that it's encouraging. So I have got a copy to give to one of you tonight, encourage you to read it, and then pass it around among yourselves and take on that leadership role of showing our community how literacy matters. So I need a volunteer.
I'll take it.
All right, thank you Cory.
I've got it on my Kindle.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much.
Congratulate the following BEP Nissan Mini Grant winners. They are Betsy Lynch from Kason Lane, Meredith Gilliwan from Hobgood, Sherri Arnett from Northfield, Kelly Jones from Mitchell Nielsen, Shannon Minner from Mitchell Nielsen, and Sayward Ratliff from Mitchell Nielsen. So congratulations to those folks who wrote the grants and who also have received the grants now. At this time, I'd like for Lisa Trail to come forward, please, and to give you an update on the City Schools Foundation.
Hello.
Hello.
My job tonight is just to give you a brief update, and several of you are very familiar with the foundation. We just completed our fall fashion show, which was very successful. It was chaired by Joyce Taylor and Liz Mcfee. We're now in the midst of planning the Excellence in Education Gala, which is going to be on Friday, February the 10th. We are getting everything ready for it right now, so anyone who wants to jump on board on a committee, we have plenty of space for you. This year, it will be a roast, and the past year, it's been a little different, so it should be a real fun event to attend. Our chairperson for the event is Senator Andy Womack, and our honoree this year will be Representative John Hood, who has, both of them have given back a lot to education. So we want to invite you to purchase your tickets early. The event is at Stone River Country Club. We'd love to have your support, and we hope to hear lots of good things coming about the foundation. It's a great avenue for us to be able to raise money to help our kids. Thank you.
Mitchell Nielsen would like to thank Bob Parks Realty and especially Agents Katie Schmelzer and Jennifer Parker. They have donated four netbooks and also donations toward the purchase of student T-shirts, and 36 of their agents purchased Mitchell Nielsen T-shirts for themselves. So we can look for Bob Parks agents with Mitchell Nielsen shirts on, and they'll be great. Murfreesboro City Schools in partnership with ENA has received a Kristi Houston Foundation grant of $32,890 for video conferencing software equipment and professional development, and I'd like to thank Mickey Brooks for taking the lead with that and for helping with that application. And also, we have received a grant from TCCY, which is the Tennessee Commission on Children and Youth. They have given Murfreesboro City a $45,000 grant. This will establish Families in Action Collaborative. Families in Action is actually a program that will work with fourth through sixth graders and their parents. It is a six-week program, and we will be able to have four different sessions of that this coming year, and I'd like to thank Tanya Hovs for her help with that. And then finally, I'd like for Greg Lyles to come forward and talk about education having the focus for December for our bicentennial celebration. I'd like for him to share the events that we will be having in honor of education and our bicentennial.
Thank you. We've been working very hard since July on planning the month of December for the city's bicentennial. The focus for the December activity is our teachers, and so there are three activities that will be going on that month. December 9th and 10th, we're working in partnership with the Parks and Recs Department on planning the Christmas at Cannonsburg, and our city school children will be performing from 6:00 to 9:00 on those nights. On December 11th, of course, is our Murfreesboro Christmas Parade at 2:00, and the city schools will have a float in that parade. And as we speak, some of our art teachers are in the Parks and Recs garage, they're working on the float for the parade, and our schools will be represented by their students carrying a banner for each of their schools. And then on December 17th, from 12:00 to 2:00, at the Bradley Museum and Cultural Center, we will be honoring our retired teachers from across the community at a reception there, and there will be a documentary that will debut that we've been working with Channel 3 on producing, which will feature many of our, will feature several of our retired educators in the community. So we invite you to participate in those three activities for the month of December in celebration of the city's bicentennial. Thank you.
And those are your items of communication.
I just think that it's so exciting what you all are doing and working together and working on the bicentennial and the foundation. You know, I can just tell that Ms. Trail has hit the ground running, and I really appreciate that, and Mr. Lyles, working on the bicentennial. I just think that's so important to celebrate education and what Murfreesboro City Schools has meant to Murfreesboro as a whole over the generations, so thank you all for that work.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Consent items, if there, is there anything on consent items before I ask for a motion for approval?
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Action items. Ms. Baker?
Okay, the first item we have before you is approval on the first reading of Board Policy BO-10. It is basically a combination of two policies that dealt with the exact same subject. We combine existing policy BO-10 with-
Policy BO-42, they both dealt with policy development, and it's simply combining the two.
Is there a motion for the approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, all in favor of the approval of BO-10? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
The next policies deal with the fiscal management of the school system, and Mr. Anderson will discuss those.
Thank you. Fiscal management, one, petty cash accounts. The only change to that policy was that the file be kept in the Finance Department, the central office. That was the only change we've recommended on that particular policy.
Are there any questions? I'll have-
Again, this is first reading?
Yes.
Do I have to ask for a motion? Someone asked me, do I have to get motions on the, thank you. Is there a motion for the approval? First reading? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, fiscal management, number two, is on the annual operating budget, and what we have done is just changed the dates, the recording dates, like in the first one on line 16, we changed it from April 1st to February 1st. We changed on 28th, line 28, from May 15th to May 1st, and then the final changes begins on line 30, where we have to file with the Commissioner of Education a copy of the adopted budget by August 1st. These were just in keeping with Tennessee codes and city codes.
Move, we approve the changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, approval FM 2, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next one is FM 5, Accounting System Financial Reports and Records. The first change in that was on line 15, where the school lunch funds are not held at the individual schools, they're held under the school nutrition program. And the second change begins on line 21, where financial records, the director of schools shall maintain financial records as required by regulation applicable state and federal law. And again, those were the only two changes we saw necessary to consider at this time.
If there are no questions, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is FM 8, Purchasing Authority. We have added quite a bit of language that does come out of Tennessee code as far as the purchasing requirements and regulations, where the $10,000 benchmark, anything purchased over $10,000 requires a certain procedure for us to follow. Anything between $500 and $10,000 requires another procedure, and we just laid all those out according to the, according to the state law and what the Tennessee Manual for Accounting is set up as. And those were the only other changes that we saw necessary for this one as well.
If there are, are there any questions?
Just have a comment. I think the changes to this one make this far easier to understand and removes any questions that people may have regarding to the procedures and how things should be done, so I thank you for adding more to this.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the approval of FM 8?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, fiscal management, nine, Sales Calls, Demonstrations, and Vendor Relations. We added a sentence starting on line 5, just to make sure everybody is following the Tennessee rules and regulations on accounting, and no member of the board or employees of the district will accept gifts from any person, group, or entity doing or desiring to do business with the district, and all business-related gratuities are specifically prohibited except nominal in value advertising items widely distributed. This is pretty much a standard procedure around the state, and we just thought it'd be best to put it in writing as a board policy.
Move, we approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one, Fiscal Management, 12, Authorization, Signatures, and Expenditure of Funds. This one, we changed in line 6, we added on the Signator, computer software. A lot of our programs now, accounting process shifted over to using computer signatures rather than the old standard mechanical type of equipment, and we have also have done that. On the individual school accounting procedures, we have laid those out according to the Tennessee Internal School Uniform Accounting Policy Manual, and they are very succinct with what the state has required of us to do and how things are to be done and followed at the school level. So again, these are written out now, so there shouldn't be any reasons for anyone to get confused on what we're doing.
If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, board, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, you were handed tonight a pink copy at your desk of Fiscal Management 16. Based on the conversations at the special meeting a few weeks ago, line number nine, item 2, we had put in a dollar amount, and based on the responses, we have pulled that specific dollar amount out, and we can put it into an administrative directive. So we just made that one change to this particular FM 16 policy, because we felt that that was the will of the board at the time.
Ms. Phillips, and then can I get Ms. Smith?
I just want to say that I appreciate your taking that action, because I think that in the long run, it'll be more effective, because I believe personally that it is an administrative issue, and I also think that that number can change. There are variables that could make that, you know, something that changes, so I just appreciate you being responsive.
Sure. Ms. Smith?
I have a similar comment, and that is that the original, the line that was taken out was that purchases in excess of $100 shall be a purchase order or from a formal contract. Well, $100 can be spent on, as someone was saying earlier, paper or ink right now, so it's good that we can have some flexibility, but people can still just use the purchase order to make the purchases. One thing that I've been very concerned about, and I mentioned in the meeting before, is that Dr. Gilbert has hired some wonderful principals, and I want to make sure that they are empowered to use funds as they wish. Of course, they will have to make sure that they're doing a good job, but of course, you're not hiring people that can't do that. So I just would like to continue to empower them and that they can maintain the identities that each school has. So this does help a little bit with that method.
Ms. Doug, and then Dr. Andrews?
I appreciate this policy from the standpoint of, I've talked to many teachers, and I know this year, with all the changes that occurred, not just at our level, but the state and the federal level, I think there's been a lot of misunderstanding about how money could be spent by individual teachers, and I think this will clarify that and make it much easier for our teachers to use money in very wise ways for their classroom without feeling like they're restricted, that they've got to have someone to sign off on it before they can go and buy the ink or buy the paper. So I greatly appreciate this also, and I trust that all of our teachers will have the opportunity to have this policy in their hand and to have it explained to them if they have further questions.
Dr. Andrews?
I'm confused. To me, this says that we can't make any purchases, not $5, nothing, unless there's an approved purchase order. So I'm not, explain to me how this makes it easier.
What, you're right. I mean, there has to be approval, but that approval can come in the form of, for example, if a teacher is going to someplace and they're buying materials, the purchase order will have not to exceed a certain amount. So that way, they're not limited, they are not having to go out, find out the exact cost, come back, and get a purchase order with that exact amount. What they do have to do is with the purchase order, it cannot exceed a certain amount. And that's a matter, I think, Gary, of really, I mean, we have no choice about that.
No, that is state law. We have to have a purchase order at the authority level.
Dr. Andrews, did I answer your question?
Yes, I think that it's, it is a little confusing for the non-financial ones of us, but yeah, that makes sense.
Thanks. Ms. Phillips, and then Ms. Smith?
I remember when I brought this up, this study session, that my concern was that we did not want to make our teachers feel like they had to jump through hoops any more than they're already jumping through some legislative hoops. But anyway, I also just wanted to say that I know that what you do in your leadership role, you have so many things you have to comply with as far as government policies and one thing and another, and then you have, you have the whole, you know, the vision of the entire school system, that you're trying to balance the competitive needs with the things you have to comply with, and you have so many, so many people and so many competing needs that you have to address, and you have to try to balance addressing them all. And I know it's a delicate tightrope walk, but I wanted to thank you for your work on this too, Dr. Gilbert and Mr. Anderson.
Ms. Smith?
So I just want to clarify, after listening to Dr. Andrews one more time, when they have a purchase order, a teacher at Bradley does not have to get it, doesn't have to go directly to the director of schools to get a purchase order approved?
The purchase order for, for the amount, what they're getting as far as if it's over $100, right now, what would happen is that principal, and I'll give you an example, principal will send up, and typically, it's not from a classroom, although when you get a large amount of money, it's going to be like from the library, band, some of those areas. So you'll see a purchase order that'll come up maybe for $500 to $2,000 or more. And what will happen is I'll go ahead and approve that purchase order, and then it goes back immediately to the school, and so there's about a day turnaround on that, if it's over that amount.
But if you're talking about the students, the room accounts?
Right.
That the, maybe the parents have contributed funds towards-
If a teacher wants, if a teacher wants to purchase something, then what they'll do is get a purchase order, the principal will sign it, and it'll have not to exceed a certain amount, and then they can use that. So it's not, if the, if the teacher wants to go to the parent-teacher store and wants to buy a bunch of stuff, and she's not sure exactly what that's going to be, she does not have to go to that store and find out what every pencil's going to cost or whatever, but what she does have to do is say, "I'm not going to exceed this much." That lets that principal have some kind of guidance as far as how much that teacher is going to spend, so they can work with their budget. Otherwise, they're not going to be able to stay within their budget unless they can do that.
Great.
Ms. Campbell?
For clarification, scenario I'm going to give you. I'm a teacher at Bradley, and this weekend, I see something that I really want to have for my classroom, so I go out and purchase it. I purchase it. It's not over $100. Then can I bring that receipt back to you as a school bookkeeper the next time, the next day we're in school and give you that purchase, that receipt, and then have that purchase order filled out, excluding the tax? I know we can't pay the tax. Is that permissible?
All right. You're right, you cannot do it on the tax, and this also stops them from just going out and buying things without getting approval from the principal to be buying something for the school ahead of time. They have to be paid, if they do buy it, they take the risk of having to pay for it themselves, because if the principal says, "That's not something that I think is appropriate for your classroom," it does not have to be reimbursed. State law says you have to have it approved. So if a teacher goes out and buys a, I don't know, whatever, for their classroom, they're going to use something, say a recorder, say a cassette recorder, something like that, and the principal says, "We don't need that, we've got 14 of those in the closet back here," then that teacher's basically bought that for themselves, because they didn't have got prior approval.
But things like supplies would, it could still come in that category, I understand, but what you're saying is the teacher can purchase it and bring the receipt back and submit it to the principal or the bookkeeper, to whomever it needs to be submitted, and if it is then approved, they will reimburse the teacher for that amount of money minus the tax?
Really, this is designed so they get preapproval before they go. That's what it's set up to do. Otherwise, you have people out there buying different things at different times in the stores, and that does not keep the control of the funds in the school.
But they could go by, say, on Friday and ask, "You, as the principal, I'm going to so-and-so this weekend, and I might like to buy," and they can get a blanket PO-
Up to a certain amount.
Up to a certain amount.
Right.
And it then can be purchased.
That's, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Phillips?
And talking about all this, just brings one of my little pet things to mind, and I'm glad to always talk about it, and that is that I don't think, I don't think that Murfreesboro City Schools needs to have its teachers worrying about whether they have enough paper in their classroom, and are they going to have to pay for this paper out of this account or that account? I believe that we ought to be able to supply our teachers with all the things, standard things, like as much paper as they're going to need, without them having to worry about little things like that. So when we talk about supplies, I just had to throw that out there.
I agree.
So I'm looking, my kids are already out of paper.
Okay.
So- Is there any more discussion or questions about FM 16? Hearing no more. I'll entertain a motion and a second for the approval.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the approval, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one, and the final one on fiscal management, is FM 17, Payroll Procedures. This is a new policy, and it's on a pink page as well. We had made some changes to that, and what was taken out was lines 6 through 12 about the procedures, and basically, these also can be put into administrative directives, and just felt that it might be best to leave that as an open item for administrative directive rather than a board policy.
I move we approve FM 17.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Action item B is a request for approval of resolution regarding vouchers. This is something that the board discussed at the Work Policy Session, and it's something I think the board feels strongly about, and rightfully so. And if you would permit, I will just read through this, and then if you have questions or feel that I need to explain any of this, I'll be happy to. This reads, "The Resolution of the Murfreesboro City Schools Board of Education in opposition to any effort to create a voucher program in Tennessee. Whereas the Murfreesboro City Schools Board of Education is responsible for providing a local system of public education, and whereas public education unifies America and forms the bedrock of our freedom as a nation, and whereas there is pending legislation before the Tennessee General Assembly that would create a voucher program allowing students to use public education funds to pay for private school tuition, and whereas the state of Tennessee, through the work of the Tennessee General Assembly, the Tennessee Department of Education, the State Board of Education, and local school boards have begun a vigorous intentional approach to reform the state's public schools, and advocating for vouchers would signal giving up on the reform they have begun to implement, and whereas the research regarding vouchers has resulted in broad inconsistencies across grade levels, content areas, and racial groups, and whereas test scores of students who use vouchers for private school education are largely indistinguishable from students who remain in public schools, and in fact, promises of dramatic improvement in student achievement through the use of vouchers are not supported by evidence, and whereas vouchers divert critical dollars away from already underfunded public schools, and believe school districts of funds needed for building upkeep, transportation, and staff, and whereas vouchers pose a serious threat to values that are vital to the health of American democracy, such as inclusiveness of all children, because they channel tax dollars to private schools that regularly show favoritism or discrimination- show favoritism or discrimination in selecting students and reject applicants because of low achievement, discipline issues, and other elements, and whereas vouchers undermine our system of public education that accepts children regardless of their ability to pay for a fee for their education, and offer nothing to families who cannot come up with the remaining funds to cover the tuition costs of private schools. Therefore, be it resolved that the Murfreesboro City School Board opposes any effort to create a voucher program in Tennessee that would divert money intended for public education to private schools."
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Dr. Andrews?
The only, I think this is excellent. It states a lot. The only thing I would add, and I'm not sure how you would say it, would be a whereas that included that money would be going to schools with no accountability, because I think that the vouchers could be used in schools who don't even have testing or don't have the same kind of testing that we have, and that just seems, you know, if we're talking about accountability, that doesn't fit. So I'm not sure how that would be written, but I'd like to see that somewhere in there too.
All right.
I think this is excellent, and it's a very short piece that explains a lot of the problems with the voucher movement. It's done very succinctly.
Ms. Phillips?
I think that's a great idea. I don't know how, I don't know the rules and regulations regarding whether this goes to schools that don't have the same level of accountability. I suspect that that is probably very accurate, and I think that would be a great addition.
I can certainly do that for you.
I'd like to move that we pass this resolution, and as amended by Dr. Gilbert, to include that one thought, and I believe we could trust her to do that well. I think we need to go ahead and get it sent, because this is a January issue.
Righty, is that your motion, Dr. Andrews?
The first part of that was the motion. I move we pass this resolution with an additional whereas that deals with the lack of accountability in private schools.
Thank you. Second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Board, all in favor of the resolution with the change that Dr. Gilbert would make, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think it's critically important that you did that. I can tell you that the teachers and the administrators will certainly appreciate that, and thank you for your stance in the past on the evaluation tool too. I think it's very important that everyone understands how supportive you are of this school district and of public schools. Thank you.
Ms. Duggan?
I would like to suggest that we do a follow-up with this issue after this is sent and after the legislature actually gets underway, and also to keep a very close eye on what happens with charter schools this year too. I think those are two critical issues, because I think we have to keep in mind that last year, the legislature, not only did they remove the number of charter schools, the cap of the number of charter schools that we could have, but they also removed the restriction that charter schools had to focus on at-risk students. So I think those are issues that we really need to stay abreast of.
All right. Dr. Gilbert?
All right, thank you. Mr. Anderson has the approval of the 2010-2011 budget amendments.
Last.
We're going to do BO 38?
BO 38.
Oh, I was. Hmm.
No, we're on number C.
Oh, we had asked to have these red, remember?
Pardon?
This is where we had asked to have these, I had asked to have these red. Is that what you're talking about?
That's after we, we have one more action item. It's on the yellow.
Okay. Oh, the yellow.
Number C.
Okay. All right. At your desk, we have set out the budget amendments from 2010-2011 budget. It's a white sheet with the spreadsheet information on top. I emailed to you yesterday a summary sheet of just the items that were over the budget expenditure amounts. This one gives you a better feel for what was over, what was under, what the final tallies were. On the, that's the front page. On the second and third page, that is a description of every one that was over, so you would understand what was in that particular line item that contributed to it going over the actual budget. And then on the last page is the school nutrition budget. We had to do a budget amendment for that also. Under the state law and the city government rules and regs, we have to have approved a budget number that does not exceed the, I mean, a budget number that actually is greater than the amount of expenditures that were made. So what we did was we went through and went through our audit that we have received, the preliminary audit report, and we went through and pulled the information off that we needed to have the board look at and review at this time. What this is now, this is a history, it's basically a five-month-old history of what happened and ended on June 30th. So I wanted to go through and try to explain some things to you as to what is in this report, so you'll understand what you're, what we're going to be asking you to vote on to approve. First of all, revenues, we did receive almost eight hundred thousand dollars more in revenues than we had originally budgeted last year. That was a good thing. The reserves and fund balances, we used, if you remember back, we approved different fund balance usage for textbooks, for computers, for infrastructure items, for many different things. And of that, we had spent by June 30th, three hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars of those fund balance funds, and we encumbered, meaning we had approved or moved forward on, an additional one million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eleven. Now, the way the accounting rules work is once we vote on, once we do something, we encumber it, meaning they pull it off our books that we can't spend it. So it's there, it's set aside. So that meant we had a total amount of encumbrances and expenditures of two million, one hundred and seven thousand, oh forty-six. Beginning of the year of that, of last school year, we had seven million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand in fund balance. So now if you look at the end of the 10-11 school year, we have five million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, oh twenty-nine. The biggest difference on this is the encumbrances, even though we have processed to pay our computers at, on a note, a note per year for four years, when you make that commitment, they encumber all the money. So they pull it out of your fund balance amounts. The textbooks, we had approved them prior to that time, the additional adoption, and then when we bought them after that, then that money was encumbered, and then it was spent after that. So that's why that number is higher than you would think it would be, and that's why we wanted to make sure you saw it in writing here what it meant. I then went down and explained each code and what contributed to the budget that went either, that went exceeded the amount of expenditure. I didn't explain the ones that didn't exceed the expenditure, but you can see those on the front page over on the right-hand side. So if you have an account that shows a negative at the bottom half of the page, that means we spent or committed that much more, and if it's not a negative, that means we had that much left in that particular budget. So I went down each one. Regular instruction, which is our biggest budget item, instruction is, you know, a thirty-plus million dollar budget on fifty, so roughly sixty-some-odd percent of our total budget is regular instruction. And a lot of people think it's just teacher salaries, and it's not. It's a lot of different things in that budget code. But in that included new textbook adoption, teacher laptops, insurance coverage, I'll explain that in just a minute, instructional supplies and materials. We received a SNAP grant, and it was like fifty-seven thousand, and we had to spend it, so we had to put it in the budget, which meant we then exceeded our budget, because we spent more than was there. Substitute teachers that we paid for, for all the professional development we did, and regular teachers and the retirement incentives that we had. I'd like to go back to the insurance coverage. When we switched over to, a lot of teachers were on that thirteen-month pay scale, as we adjusted them to a twelve-month overall pay, we kept and accounted for thirteen months of benefits. So this particular year, nine-ten, we had thirteen months, which means eleven, eleven-twelve, we will only have eleven months. So it kind of, it's half a dozen of one, six of the other. We just accounted for it in this year instead of the current year we're in. So it doesn't matter, it just shows up in one year versus a different year. But we did that on all the insurance benefits. We did it on the thirteen-month, yes.
Will that happen in the following year?
No, it'll go back to the twelve. After this next year, when we, when all the, when all the pay schedules are on one set pattern, then they'll go back to twelve, 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 twelve.
And this, Gary, was a result really of the calendar.
Right. When we changed the calendar, we had to put our teachers who were at the alternative schools on a thirteen-month pay cycle. And when that happened, we could have done it either way on the benefits, meaning the insurance, health insurance, and health insurance is very expensive. We could have done it either way, and we just put it into this last year, the year when we had it. Next one, student health, and I'm not going to go through all of it, I just wanted to give you an idea.
I'm sorry, may I ask a question?
Sure.
On the regular instruction? On the teacher laptops?
Yes.
That will be budgeted as pro forma for future years, correct?
Right. We budget it that way, and then when we pay it, it comes off of the encumbrance. It's kind of, it's kind of weird the way it happened, because they do carryovers on the encumbrances. So we owe like, say, four hundred thousand, we budget a hundred, I'll just say a hundred thousand. We owe three hundred thousand, so it gets dropped off the encumbrance, and then it shows as an expenditure during that year. But now we get hit hard on it, and it just keeps changing as we go.
Because it's the first year.
Yeah.
I see.
Because we, because we've committed to spending that money on that.
So in, in the years that they are replaced, so the next go around, will you budget for it?
It's-
So for, in the fourth year or?
After we get through these all, yes. You have two different ways to buy it. You can lease it, or you can actually outright purchase it. Accounting-wise, it makes no difference, they're going to hit you with that expense that first year.
Okay.
That's the difference, is we're just paying for it over time, kind of like buying a car. In a student support health, we had substitute nurses we had to pay, because we had received some students who had requirements and needs that we had to have a nurse at a school for, that we did not plan to have that nurse at that school. And we had to move two nurses from our federal IDEA budget over to our general purpose budget. So we had to take them into our general purpose operating budget, and the medical health unit, mobile health unit, I'm sorry, the salary that was paid was from a Middle Tennessee Medical Center grant. Once again, we had to put the expense into our budget, but it was funded through a grant. So I just wanted to give you an idea of some of the things, and you can go through these if you'd like, and see if you have any other questions. Ultimately, what we are asking you to do tonight, so we can get this to City Hall, so the, so the City Council can do the approval of all the budgets, is we're trying to get you to make a motion to approve the amendments as detailed in these school general purpose fund and the school nutrition fund, which is the first page and the fourth page. But I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Some move?
I have a question.
We've got most of them. They have a question. I'm going to take that question.
The laptops, they didn't come out of the technology fund balance? They came out of the general fund balance?
They were, they were put into the teacher line, but the technology fund balance is what we're going to end up paying for them, paying them out of. This is again where it gets hairy on how you account for it. Once we did it and leased it, we still have, we still have to pay for them, because we leased it, so we're paying a little bit at a time. And it can easily come out of that fund balance. But again, it's the same thing, it's encumbered, it's taken out now.
Out of the technology fund balance?
Well, it was, it was assigned to the code of regular instruction because it went to the teachers and regular instruction materials for the teachers.
Okay.
Okay. What we're using, the techno, it can be done that way, that's fine. We're using the technology budget for infrastructure issues, because those are things that no one really sees, but you know when they don't work. All the servers, all the support things, all the wireless stuff.
Right.
They know that. So we try to put the things that are in teachers' hands in instruction budget, and things that are back-of-the-house support things into the technology budget. So we just try to differentiate those two that way.
That was one question. And yeah, personally, I think we ought to beef up our technology fund balance for any future technology we might need for our kids, because I think that's, you know, it's a whole big world out there, but especially if you went to the meeting that we all went to at Opryland. But anyway, and the next question I had is, how many schools have nurses in them?
We have a nurse in every school, except MNE and MMP share one nurse, because it's like one campus, and we have one and a half nurses at Northfield because of the acuity, meaning that quite a few needs at that school.
Right, right, right. I understand. Okay, that's what I was hoping, that's what I had, thought we had done, and that's why I was wondering why we had to move nurses, because I wasn't understanding that. We had a nurse.
We didn't move the nurse, we moved the funding piece for them.
Okay.
Just what, what pot they were paid out, so to speak.
Okay, okay, all right. That makes more sense. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Couple of questions really for future reference, but are we having to add additional nurses? Are you seeing a need that we're having to add additional nurses in our buildings? I know most of them are LPNs, are they, are they not?
We have, we have actually three RNs. By law, we have to have one RN on duty at all times to cover the LPNs. You know, they can't, they have to report to an RN.
Yes.
The reason is Bradley didn't have a full-time nurse, and the student ended up going to Bradley. So we had to then hire a full-time nurse, because the child had, had issues that we needed a full-time nurse there for. That nurse was shared, Bradley and Hubgood shared one nurse, so we added one nurse to Bradley, because we had to do that, because someone had to be there full-time.
But that was a new position?
Yes, ma'am, that was a new position.
Okay. So I'm just wondering if at some point we continue to have needs that we require additional nurses, that has a significant impact on our budget, so I just wanted to keep an eye on that. And the other thing, under the, one right below that says other student support, and it talks about dare officers paid through this code when not originally planned in the budget. So had we not planned for the dare officers in our previous, when we approved the budget earlier?
Would you like to handle that one, Dr. Gilbert?
I'll let you handle that one. Well, actually, Ms. Baker, we want to. The dare officers, there was discussion about actually which fund it came out of, whether it came out of the city police fund or whether it came out of the city schools fund. It's my understanding that it was decided that it should come out of the city schools fund.
In the past, has that not been a shared effort that came out of both budgets?
In the past, I think that's been difficult to determine.
Okay. So I think that's something that we need to look at very carefully, because here again, that's a significant, can be a significant cost, just so we are not caught unaware of what we are responsible for.
Mr. White?
And I have to compliment always, though, the job that the dare officers do for the kids at Murfreesboro City Schools. They're such great role models, the kids learn so much from them. I know they greatly impacted my kids' lives, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Campbell?
How many dare officers do we have that we are paying for out of the school budget?
Two. Two dare, two dare officers.
Because they aren't full-time.
No. But they go, they cover, I think they cover multiple schools.
Yes, and I need to check, and I can report back to you on that, because this may not, from the numbers, I'm not sure that it's all there. I'll check with Lynn on that and get back at you.
Who do they report to?
They actually are, they report to the police department, but they are in our schools, so they are hired to serve our schools. And we actually will be starting a new round of dare, as a matter of fact, in January. One comment I'd like to make about Ms. Duggan's request, we are seeing students with increased needs, as I'm sure you are aware, and quite often, those students, we have no way to really prepare for them, because when they enroll, we serve them.
Absolutely.
And it can be from a transfer, or it can be from a new enrollment. As you know, we serve all three-year-olds that are special needs students, and so you're going to see an impact on the budget whenever that happens.
My concern is that we just make sure that we always have-
Right.
Enough flexibility within our budget, that we can-
Right.
-meet those needs without putting ourselves in jeopardy financially.
Right. And I think that's something we try to do, but sometimes it's hard to predict.
It is, we just need to be as wise, as thorough as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Duggan. Ms. Phillips?
I'm just very grateful that we can have a nurse in each school, and I think Ms. Duggan's points are well-taken. And I really appreciate the job that the social workers do, working with the nurses to try to address the whole child throughout the school, not just children that have maybe, you know, more challenging medical needs, but, you know, the whole focus of-
you know, more challenging medical needs, but, you know, the whole focus of being healthy and making good choices, and addressing the social needs and the family home issues. And I just think that's so important, and there's an important component of our scores going up. I think that's one of the reasons our scores have gone up, is because we are addressing the entire child, so.
Thank you.
There is a motion for the approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, sign of "aye."
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you. Reports and information?
Yes, under reports and information, the first report is Board Policy BO38. This is the school board accountability standards, and my understanding is that you wanted this read aloud, is that correct?
I think it's great, I think it's been great in the past, when the board members have read this aloud, because there are several, I mean, they're just little short things, and it just helps the public to know what our guidelines are, and what guidelines we have to operate and serve under, how we serve, and serve more effectively.
I'll start.
Okay.
I will, at all times, think in terms of children first, always determining other important things according to how they affect education and training of children.
I will seek to provide equal educational opportunities for all children, regardless of ability, race, color, sex, creed, or location of residence.
Article II, my relations to my community. I will endeavor to appraise fairly both the present and future educational needs of the community, and to support improvements as finances permit.
I will represent at all times the entire school community, and refuse to represent special interests or partisan politics.
Section III, I will endeavor to keep the community informed about the progress and needs of the schools.
Article III, my relations to teachers and personnel. Section I, I'll support the employment of those persons best qualified to serve as employees, and insist on a regular and impartial evaluation of all staff.
Just finish the last one.
Section II, I'll support and protect personnel and performance of their duties.
Second.
Oh, gotta keep going. I didn't get to the bottom of it, did I? Oh, yeah. I'm still learning how to work these Macs.
I will not criticize employees publicly, but will make such criticism to the director of schools for investigation and action if necessary.
Article IV, my relations with other board members. Section I, I will recognize that authority rests only with the board in official meetings, and that the individual member has no legal status outside of such meetings.
Section II, I will refuse to make promises as to how I will vote on a matter which should properly come before the board as a whole.
Section III, I will make decisions only after full discussion of matters at a board meeting.
Section IV, I will respect the opinion of other members, and will accept the principle of majority rule.
Article V, my relations with the director of schools. Section I, I'll support full administrative authority, as well as responsibility for the director of schools, to properly discharge all professional duties.
Section II, I will support director of schools accountability for working and requiring staff to work within the framework of policies set up by the board.
Section III, I will refer all complaints and concerns to the director of schools.
Article VI, my relations to myself. Section I, I will be informed about my duties and responsibilities and current educational issues by individual study and through participation in programs providing needed information, such as those sponsored by my state and National School Boards Association.
Section II, I will avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest, and will refrain from using my board position for personal or partisan gain.
Thank you all.
It's my pleasure to present a friend of mine. I've known Dr. Sadler for quite a while, in fact, worked with her before she was Dr. Sadler, as a matter of fact. But she has been a tremendous friend of ours, and is representative of MTSU at its finest. And so, Kim, I'm going to turn it over to you.
This is just really an honor to be here tonight. I'd like to share with you all a project that, full disclosure here, that Dr. Gilbert and I were involved with at MTSU. I'm a life science educator, I'm an associate professor of biology. And before I begin, I'd like to introduce my colleagues. I have with me, I have Emily Newton, who is the coordinator for the project I'm going to share with you all, and then also Dr. Wendy Beckman, who is an associate professor in the aerospace department. This is a project that was funded through the National Science Foundation, and let me go ahead and get ramped up with an opening slide. The name of it is the Earth Energy in Civilization. This is the Academy for Young Scientists. The project actually ran in two parts, and this had to do with some transitions that occurred within the scope of the project, and is in process right now. We are fortunate in that NSF was willing to take a fairly large pot of money and distribute it to 15 different sites throughout the country, and we were one of those sites that was selected. So I'd like to share with you an aspect of this project, and really also, on the personal note, that the idea for this project came out of the heart and mind of Dr. Linda Gilbert. And so I know that this is really exciting for her to get to see this come to fruition. So you all can see with the cartoon that what the National Science Foundation was interested in knowing is really, what is it that inspires children to become interested in STEM careers? And it was based on a very large, long longitudinal study by Dr. Robert Tye at the University of Virginia. And what it is that he was able to discern, and this is thousands and thousands of students, is over a period of time, they followed students from middle school into college, into professional livelihood. And what they were able to discern is students that admitted in middle school that they really felt that they wanted to be a scientist or do something in a STEM area, they did. And they did beyond any barriers that you could name, that you could put in front of a child. So what was that, that inspired these students to go into STEM? And this is where we actually got to be part of this larger study. And so what we were required to do as part of this project is so many hours. So was it time? Was it time that students spent involved in STEM endeavors? Was it contact with teachers that had been trained in STEM endeavors? So really, what was it that was the key component? So our really guiding question, there were actually four, but this is one that I'll address with you tonight, is can we increase student interest and achievement in STEM? And we were really charged with trying to follow the guidelines with NSF, and then work with schools that had students at increasing risk. So the first phase of this project involved schools in Cannon County, Rutherford County, and also Murfreesboro City Schools. So what we did with this project is we initiated after-school science club that involved a minimum of four hours contact time, and then a two-week summer camp. Then also, the students who opted to do this were involved with the MTSU's Spending Your Horizons in Math and Science, which is an all-day workshop for middle school young women. And then also, Science Olympiad, we were partnered with them as well. And then probably one of our dearest friends are the people from Children's Discovery Center. So we had them coming into our school sites once a month, specialists from Discovery Center sharing some aspect of science. And additionally, they also worked on science on Saturday. So kids don't learn in isolation. Families are a big part of the inspiration for learning science. And our project included four family science nights, where we fed everybody, and then the students were put in charge of the science activity for that night. And the graphic that you all are looking at, you can see a mother and her son. The activity is how many drops can you get on a penny? And that's not actually a trivial endeavor. There's a lot of science behind that, and other tables of people around, there's a competition going on, and there's a lot of science that can be talked about, just dropping water drops on a penny. And again, we can't discount the teachers. So the teachers that interacted with these students were involved in really involved professional development. You can see they're really involved, can't you? And again, we had a lot of engineering, we looked at Newton's laws, and this was part of Phase One. And then with Phase Two, what we've done is we've used these hands-on science trunks, which have been donated to the project by Rutherford County Schools. Another component to this for our teachers is our students were in a two-week summer camp, and the teachers were part of the business classroom community partnership, which is sponsored through the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce. So our teachers went to a two-week summer camp where they picked a strand, transportation, aviation, forensics, medicine, et cetera, et cetera. They picked a strand related to STEM, and they attended their own two-week summer camp. So they could go back to their students and talk about the application of STEM. Why do I need to know geometry? Why do I need to know math? Why do I need to know about science? Well, it turns out that when there's a car accident, the officer is going to measure the tire, the skid marks. Math matters. It matters at all levels of livelihood. And you can see that the image of their, this was the transportation strand, where the teachers actually got to fly a plane. So we'd like to talk a little bit about Phase Two, where we're more heavily involved in the city schools. And I'm going to turn this over to Emily Newton, who's the coordinator for the project. And really, I'm involved with all things university, and I couldn't do this without Emily. So Emily, you'll go ahead and just share some of the aspects of this.
Sure. So currently, we are in five different schools. We are in three Murfreesboro City Schools, and we are in two Rutherford County Schools. And what we have is about 74 students regularly meeting, and we have two teachers at each site, and we have one MTEach intern from MTSU. These are undergraduate students who are interested in becoming teachers in STEM-related careers. And so they also teach once a month to the students, and the teachers evaluate them and talk to them about how they did and that sort of thing. So they're very involved in the program. And so kind of what this program looks like now, of course, it's an after-school science club, and we start the program every session. We meet once a week for two hours. We initially started with two times a week last semester, and that got a little too much for the kids. We didn't have as great attendance, and our teachers were getting pretty worn out, you know, being with the kids two hours after school twice a week. So we did it once a week, and our attendance is up, and our teachers are more than happy to be there. So what we start our clubs with are called Wows. And what Wows are, are science experiments that the kids actively participate in, and they really surprise them. So it's something, something happens, and they're really shocked about the outcome of the science experiment. And so the ones, the picture under the Wows are excellent. They actually put eggs into vinegar, and I'm sure you all know this experiment. Over time, the eggshell disappears, and then you can, the egg becomes translucent, and you can see them. And so they observed what happened, and talked about it, and asked questions about it, and that sort of thing. And just recently, I did a magic milk experiment. And what that experiment looks like is it's milk at room temperature in a Petri dish, and you put four different colors of food coloring around it. And then you take a Q-tip and put it in dishwashing liquid, and stick it in the middle, and it's all tie-dye. And so the kids called it hippie milk, which I thought was funny. But we talked about why that happens, and surface tension, and what changes when you put this open. And so they get really excited, because they are, they have colorful milk and that sort of thing. So that's really interesting. So we start every session with a wow, and those look differently. And so we ask a lot of questions, and they ask a lot of questions, and they get really excited about what's going on, and why does it do that? And so in this next picture, we actually have one of our Black Fox Elementary teachers, and she is having the kids take a cup of water, put an index card over the water, and flip it over, and the index card doesn't fall. And so the kids are like, whoa, why isn't it falling? What's going on? And so we talk about that, and they ask questions, and we respond to their, and respond to them, and answer their questions. And so that really gets them excited for the core part of the session. And so like Dr. Sadler was mentioning briefly, we are very, very lucky to have hands-on science trunks donated to us from Rutherford County Schools. And Sarah Jesse has come in and trained our teachers on these science trunks. And so that's what they do. And they are, as I'm sure some of you know, research-based, they're data-proven, and so each concept builds on the previous concept. So by the end of it, hopefully, they've got a really good understanding of it. And so what we did last semester was, excuse me, experiments with plants and pollination, and then we did floating and sinking. And the experiments with plants, they made their own plants, and then they pollinated their own plants with frozen bees. And so that was really cool. They had a really good time with that. And the magnets and motors kit is what we're working on now, as well as the technology of paper. So they learn how to recycle paper, how to make paper, what that looks like, and so this is what they do every session, and they really, really love it.
And journals.
Ah, and our journals. Yes, thank you for reminding me. Our notebooks, our scientific notebooks, those are the most important parts. And underneath the magnets and motors, they are currently journaling. And what that looks like is they'll make a hypothesis about what's going to happen, what's it going to look like. They go through the scientific process, and then they draw pictures about what's happening, they make their own observations about what's happening, or what they think might happen, they write down their own data. And so they're just composition notebooks like this, and they just draw pictures and keep their data inside it. And they, I mean, they really do love these little notebooks. A lot of kids have a really good time drawing and coloring and that sort of thing, and it makes it fun and interesting for them. And then they can flip back and see what they've done throughout the semester, and they just love that. And so that's kind of what our current after-school science club looks like. This past summer, we did a two-week aerospace summer camp, and that was a blast. It was incredible. We were able to work with Dr. Wendy Beckman, who we have here with us. She is a professor in the aerospace department at MTSU, and she helped come up with all the activities we did, and what the lessons the kids were going to learn. And we partnered with the aerospace department, and we got four different aerospace students who are undergraduate students, and then we partnered them with four MTEach students. So we had people who are really knowledgeable about the content material, and we had people who were really great with kids, and learned how, you know, learned how to teach. They really played off of each other. And one would be teaching, and the other one would be handling classroom environment and that sort of thing. So it was really interesting. So Wendy, do you want to come talk about the summer camp?
First, I have to really thank Dr. Sadler for inviting me to do this, and I apologize, I've got cold, so I'm very hoarse. But I wanted to do an aerospace workshop with some elementary to middle-school age kids for a very long time. And so I was sort of searching around, trying to figure out how to do that, and along comes Dr. Sadler going, we want to do an aerospace camp with this money that we already have. I was like, oh my gosh, that's just terrific. So I kind of fell right into that. So they did invite me to help work on the activities and do the camp. And as you guys can see on the slide, get that back up, there were 76 students, and they were from Rutherford County and Murfreesboro City Schools. We did it at Black Fox over the summer. Some of the activities that we did, that the kids were very enthusiastic about, you know, some of them are listed here, but we built gliders, we did rubber band-powered airplanes and did experiments with those, and loading those with pennies and paper clips, and measuring how far they went. We had rubber band airplanes flying around pylons in the gym, seeing how many, yeah, it was actually quite the scene. We did Bernoulli tubes to talk about lift and how airplanes fly. One of the best things that we did is we had a public service grant from MTSU that got us five sets of Microsoft Flight Simulator laptop kits. And so it's a laptop that runs Microsoft Flight Simulator. We had the flight yokes, the rudder pedals, the throttle quadrants, so it's like you're really flying an airplane. And what's been great about that is we still have those. So we use them at the camp. Every child flew that for three hours, they did three separate missions using Flight Simulator. But now we're actually able to take those kits, and now I've been to, I believe, five or six of the schools. We've been to Bradley, Segal, Reeves Rogers, I'm skipping, John Pittard, Oakland. Yeah, we've done a whole bunch already of visits to have the kids in classrooms fly them. So now, Dr. Gilbert actually sent out an email to all the teachers, saying, you know, this is an opportunity, and they responded en masse. It was insane the first couple of weeks. I mean, I'd walk in and have 50 emails, like, oh my, I'm getting through this. But now we've kind of got that under control, and so that's sort of a long-lasting benefit that started with the camp. The kids all got to go on an airplane ride, so we took them out to the airport, they had an airport day. They got to go into the MTSU campus, and you guys may have heard about our new state-of-the-art air traffic control center, that's been all in the news, you know, throughout the summer. The kids actually got to act like an air traffic controller and land an airplane, you know, give it a clearance to land as part of the experience. So that was just a lot of fun stuff, and the kids all just, you know, by and large, ate it up. They had a great time. Pictures, you guys can see, there's the whole crew. We had them in four different sets, that's sort of the rainbow colors, they were green, yellow, red, and blue were the teams. On their airplane flights, we had some pictures of them getting their We had some pictures of them getting their airplane flights in. We were really lucky. The weather was only bad one day. The last group had to get put off to the Friday afternoon when the camp ended, which was sort of bad. There was a few kids who didn't get to fly because scheduling-wise, parents couldn't bring them back or whatever. But everybody else had great weather and had a great time. I think we only had one person get airsick, and even he loved it. I mean, he got up, threw up, and was like, it was the best thing ever. Like, okay, there you go. So I would say that was kind of a success. He was, he was thrilled. Wanted to do it again, like, well, let's wait, you know? We went down to the Space and Rocket Center down in Huntsville. They had an awesome day down there, a lot of fun with that. The Bernoulli tubes I was talking about, which let's say demonstrate lift, after we had talked about lift and done Bernoulli tubes, then they built structures out of them. So we got off on some tangents, but they were a lot of fun. So anyway, it was really a great experience, and I think the kids took a lot away from that and sort of opened their eyes to maybe some opportunities they'd never thought about. You know, we always think with having the aerospace department right over here at MTSU that everybody in Murfreesboro knows about, you know, aerospace and MTSU, and people don't. I mean, it's just not something that kind of comes up in everyday life. So hopefully, we were able to share that with the students. I believe Dr. Sadler has a couple of graphs to share with you here.
I know the busy graph that you should really never show, but so this is, of course, part of a research project, and we're using a survey that the 15 sites across the nation are using. And this is a 43-item paper survey, if you will. And so I picked out two of the items on there that I think are, we don't, statistically, we don't have anything significant, and this is more than 521 kids have been through the program. And so you can imagine that, you know, NSF, they're scratching their head, wondering really, what does it take to inspire a student to be interested in STEM? But if you look at this, the way that this, of course, there's six columns, and starting on the left is baseline and exit disagree. The two middle would be baseline and exit don't know. And then the two on the right would be baseline and exit would be agree. So the two that I think are interesting is, science is my favorite subject. Again, you can see that we're seeing trends, we're seeing increases in all of these. And then the other one is, it's important for me to understand the work that I do in science. So I do feel like we're making a difference. The statistician, who are part of the bigger part of this project, they're trying to figure out really, what does it take to inspire a student to be interested in STEM? And you know that we're all trying to think of the answer, and probably with your own children, in your own homes. I mean, where does it all begin? We know it begins, of course, with the families, but if we can get families excited, get kids excited, then perhaps we'll be able to make a difference, really not only in our schools, in our county, in our country. And so I was really, really excited to be part of this project. We're continuing on, at least through January. I'm hopeful to get another extension. I have a little bit of money left, and so this is an exciting time for us. So thank you so much. I'll be glad to answer any questions or talk with you more about this later.
Your enthusiasm is contagious. Thank you so much. I am so fired up that y'all did this and had such success. And another hat that I wear is with the City Schools Foundation, and we've been looking for areas in order to help with the sciences and in partnership, obviously, with the city schools. And I'm very excited to have y'all on board and working so hard with their children. Of course, those graphs were skyrocket. I mean, with y'all as the leaders of the program, I think that they almost had a super fun time, and it was clear that y'all did too. So I would like to see the Murfreesboro City Schools really be in the forefront of science education. And as part of this, you know, we're part of the science corridor from Oak Ridge down to Huntsville. And I think that we should really demonstrate that we're part of that, and that Murfreesboro City Schools should be, you know, the best science school system in the country. So if we can work with programs like this, I think we have a good, we're on a good path towards that. So thank you.
You would probably agree with me that this inspiration, it starts with really young children. And I teach pre-service teachers, and I find that they have an abiding love for children. And it concerns me that they don't have a love for learning. So I think if we could really look at our lower grades, our lower elementary, and I know that science is not part of one of the core areas, but it can be easily integrated and drops on a penny, there's so much that can be learned related to science and just the smallest scale.
Well, science may not be part of the core area, but is the core of people's livelihoods.
And interest, too.
I want to echo what Ms. Miss said. I think you're right on the money. It was so exciting. I wanted to go to the camp. Can I come? And Murph has been over to visit at the air traffic control center, was very excited. And now Murph wants to come to the science camp and do a little typing there because it's very exciting. And I just want to thank you all. Thank you for your enthusiasm and caring and your time and doing so much. This is going to make a real difference for these children's lives. I mean, anything that makes a real difference is just awesome, really, truly awesome. So thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
I'd just like to comment that my son told me when he was young that, he read that if you knew what you wanted to do when you were 10 years old, that you'd end up making more money when you grew up. He knew that he wanted to be a computer engineer, and that's what he is, and he's doing quite well. But, you know, even at a young age, he knew that if you knew what you wanted to do, you were going to be a lot more likely to meet your goals. And you all are helping young children decide what excites them, what gives them passion. And, you know, a lot of the kids that you're touching, they're going to be having just as much fun at work as he does now. He loves what he does. He just, it's like, he'd do it for pennies. He has so much fun. So I think it's great that you're going to get, you know, a bunch more kids excited about what they can do in the future. It's going to help our whole country. Yeah, I want to come, too.
Thank you. Under reports and information, item C is your personnel update, D, monthly revenue, and E, attendance report. Mr. Anderson?
Monthly revenue expenditure report. We're at 33.3% of the year. As you know, we still are waiting on property taxes to come in. Everybody, please make sure you go pay your property taxes early, get them in the revenue stream. I wanted to show you a new line item that we put in, a sixth item down, energy efficiency schools. As you know, we did the energy efficiency grants, and this is the grant funds coming back to the district, $151,000. That was the max we could get on the grant part. But that's a new revenue item in there. Just wanted to share that with you. As always, we're obviously behind on the revenue collections because of the holidays and the property taxes haven't come to us yet, so we're anxiously awaiting those. On the expenditure side, we're at 32.3. We're still below the 33.3% category. We did get hit, as I mentioned, last month early on the workers' compensation bill of $363,000 that we had to pay. Usually comes later, but we paid it last month, so that kind of threw us out of whack on that one. But overall, we're where we should be right now, this time of year. Any questions?
I just noticed we're a little bit behind on our biggest revenue stream compared to last year with our, what, sales tax?
Yes, the local. A second. The sales tax number is up in dollars but down in percentage, because we had budgeted to have a more robust year this year. So we do have more dollars received, just not quite as high a percentage. The other county revenues are what's coming in slower than it had in previous years. And that was the pattern that started towards the end of last fiscal year as well. But we are hopeful with the economy picking up and our families moving into the community, bringing students to us, that that also helped pick up on those two items. But yes, you're correct. The other report is the attendance report and enrollment numbers. We are 166 students over, the amount we budgeted, and we're 190 students over where we were last year at this time. We do, as you know, we do receive a trend. We start out high, then we drop down a little bit, then we start to pick up again. So we're at our low right now, where we anticipated, maybe what we will be picking up as the year continues to go on, as we receive more special ed students, as they get of age to come into our pre-K program as well. We always end up with quite a few of those. Our PTR ratio for K through three is at 18.82, and our PTR for four through six is at 20.81 with an overall ratio of 19.55 for all grades. Our attendance number is back up again. It's at 96.3% attendance, which is excellent, excellent. So that's where we are this time on enrollment and finances.
Ms. Phillips?
Do we find out about our growth money in January?
January, right. I am anxiously awaiting that.
That's what I was thinking. Because...
Are there any questions from Mr. Campbell?
I'd like to go back to another area, though. I mean, it's not on the budget. Okay? Go back in looking at personnel, and I'm asking for information because I don't know. Is this pretty much ballpark as it is every year? It just seems like we've got several that have left or are leaving all of a sudden, the resignations. Is that typical number about, Ralph?
Yes, sir. These resignations include classified as well as certified. This list has three certified personnel, and the rest are classified.
Okay. Is that, is that number fairly normal for what we see every year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Anderson or Mr. Ringstaff?
Other business, is there anything that you'd like to see on the agenda for our next board meeting, which is in January?
Ms. Phillips?
I just want to compliment whoever designed this. This is great. It talks about the Murfreesboro City Schools presents the International Dinner at Bradley Academy on Thursday, December 15th, between 5:00 and 7:00. I just think that's an exciting event. I know I went to one last year and had a great time to see the multicultural, experience the multicultural event, and people bring such wonderful food. That was my favorite part. And they had dancers from different cultures, and it was just an exciting thing to see. So I wanted to thank you for the invitation.
If there is nothing that entertains us for other business, will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Thank you.